Good evening. Welcome to the Western Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education Committee Meeting. This is the Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Today's Tuesday, June 23rd. This meeting is being held virtually. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Committee Chair Leah Crowley.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Welcome, everybody, to the special call meeting for Buildings and Grounds. Let's start with, Dr. Harrison, if you would do the honors of a roll call to establish that we have a quorum for the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, ma'am. Leah Crowley?
Present.
Lina Calvert-Hayes. She is on the call, virtually. Marilyn Parker?
Present.
Present.
Deanna Kaplan?
Present.
And Dana Jones?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We're going to start with our first discussion item. It's a topic that was tabled in our last Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. It's the Wiley Edition project costs. Colin was going to bring us some more information to help us with this decision.
And I would like to start, if it's okay, Chair Crowley. Apologize for any level of confusion around this matter. We were looking at the Brunson property. Our Assistant Superintendent, Daryl Walker, asked me if we could, we had a bid going out for Wiley, but asked me if it would be okay to bid out some alternate items. And seeing usual, and I did send you an email of recent projects where alternate items were bid out. And so the rationale was the fact that we have a community out there raising money for a stadium, and we've also had a lot of dialogue around that stadium. And there was no decision being made around the stadium, and the alternate bids, the intent was not to imply a decision had been made, but it was to secure alternate bids just to get cost because we're always asking, public meetings, what does it cost? What is it going to cost? And different ranges of prices go in and out. So that was the rationale that was provided to me. At the last meeting, the cost was, and Mr. Martin will explain the reason for the additional cost of the Wiley Gymnasium. And I asked Mr. Walker to talk about the additional items. Again, it wasn't to imply that additional items had been added to the cost. It was just to explain to you on a transparent way that an alternate bid had been put out there, and some items were, we requested pricing on certain items, again, so we can have information as we have questions. And in all transparency, I really feel one of the best things that we could do for all of ourselves is to make a recommendation relative to this project and make a decision so that we can move forward. And I would like to do that in honest. But relative to this project, it sort of came confusing through the presentation. And so I did ask permission to come back to you and clarify the presentation because it just seemed confusing even to me. And it was a very simple question. So hopefully, the information you've been provided, the questions that you've submitted, and the responses you received have been sufficient so that we can vote on this matter this evening. And if not, we certainly are open to answering additional questions. So at this time, I'd like to, and I did ask, by the way, our attorney to take a look at the project to be sure that what we were reporting to you, not that it was in question, but the bid that was taken was aligned with what we said we were going to do. So Colin, I'm going to ask you to present out to the board or the committee. And you can be calling?
I can, I can hear you. It took me a second to unmute. I apologize. So good evening, Dr. Harrison, Madam Chair, and other members of the committee, and the board, they're present. So I did want to present, following up on our conversation, I guess, two weeks ago, is to present you some additional information in line with some questions that you had. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen, and hopefully it'll come up. Is there a PowerPoint showing?
Yes, Colin, it's up. Thank you.
All right, so, all right, I'll run through this, but I want to just clarify a few things here. So I wanted to clarify exactly what this GMP scope of work includes. I just wanted to have that information for you. We're installing erosion control, and we will be accessing the site from the access road that comes into Haynes Park at the baseball fields. We'll be driving, have an access road from there to the property along the back of the Reynolds Gym and the Reynolds Auxiliary Gym to access the site. This will allow us to continue to have students coming in and out of campus. So we will be doing that erosion control and that work to access the site. We will be demoing the existing Wiley Gym, and we're going to be doing site work to allow for construction of the new Wiley Gymnasium. So by that, I mean, we're basically digging a 25-foot-deep hole. That site work is included in there. We will be renovating the existing mechanical room in the existing Wiley building. That is, if you were walking into the media center from the courtyard, it would be on your left. You may not know there's a mechanical room there, but we're going to convert that into an exterior access mechanical room and install a new boiler. We'll basically be taking a two-story room and putting a mezzanine there, and that's where we're going to be putting the boiler in that currently is located in the Wiley Gymnasium. We'll be moving the boiler into the Wiley building. So that scope of work is included in this GMP. We'll also be renovating four areas inside the existing Wiley that we will be making a tie into. So part of the bond was to provide six new steam classrooms. We'll be providing four in the, and as you saw in the schematic drawing you approved, we'll be installing four in the new addition. We'll be installing two additional ones inside the existing Wiley building. We'll be doing that renovation. That's included in the GMP. And then we'll be constructing a new 27,000-square-foot, two-story building right adjacent to the existing Wiley building. That will be a new entrance to Wiley. It'll have an admin area, a gym, a locker room, storage, restrooms, and steam classrooms. So that's the scope of work that's included in this GMP. You can see an aerial photo here. The Wiley Gym Edition is generally located where the blue is. We'll be utilizing the yellow area as construction, access, and lay-down area. So that will all be, once the existing gym comes down, that will be converted. That will be where we store our materials. That'll keep us out of the bus park a lot. It'll keep us out of Northwest Boulevard. Just wanted to recapture everything that you've seen in the package before. This is maybe hopefully summarizing our project cost summary a little better. So our base bid price from our contractor, from Vanoye Construction, was $9,169,520. We did ask for some alternates. The alternates that we accepted after review of was a subfloor at the gym. This is an additional layer of flooring between the wood floor, that's the basketball court. There is subfloor under there, but we researched the additional cost for the subfloor, and if it was reasonable, we thought it would be a good investment to minimize the sound transmission from the gym to the rooms below, locker room and classrooms. So that value was a little under $28,000, and we elected to accept that because of, we felt like it was a reasonable price for having that additional protection. And then we also had a fire separation. Actually, it was a deduct to install a fire separation wall. So it's just a matter of the drywall being less expensive than the chillicoat. We tested that. Brought a total of $9,195,963 was the guaranteed maximum price for Vanoye Construction for the contract. In addition to that, there's some things that we have to do to get the school open. We've got to design the facility. We buy furniture. We have to do test construction materials testing, which ensures we're getting good products, concrete, steel bolt tightening, asphalt paving, subgrade. We've got to inspect footings. Things like that, we buy as an owner, as a third-party, with a third-party company. We have to do some utility improvements, power improvements, water sewer, those kind of things. Technology for all the areas that are improved. We'll also do commissioning, which is basically an energy code conformance that the energy code now requires us to do. Surveying that has to be done as part of the new construction. We do that survey. Security cameras, access control, that kind of thing falls into the miscellaneous category. So our project calls, we were able to actually kind of estimate a little bit less than what we had projected originally in the bond budget in 2016. But those project calls total about $1.3 million. And you also were provided a breakdown of that, I think, as some documents that were provided prior to this meeting. Brings the total project cost to just under $10.5 million. The original project bond budget was, including inflation, we had inflation booked into there, and that was $10,152,000, leaving a deficit or difference of $345,760. That's the amount that we are requesting, the amount over budget that we would ask to recapture from the additional inflation. Any questions on the cost summary? I've got one more slide to talk a little bit about this inflation piece, address some questions that I've had, but I'll be glad to address any questions on this if you have any.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Moore? Okay, why don't you go ahead and continue then?
So I want, really quickly, this last slide talks a little bit about inflation in the 2016 bond. So including this ask, we have requested a little over $15.4 million in inflation. There was a line item of about $24.6 million in the bonds to cover inflation. So with this ask, we are at 63% of the allocated inflation amount. The amount of contracts that we've encumbered to date that coordinates with that inflation ask is just under $184 million. So we're about 52.5% of the $350 million bond. So we're about, we're running about 11% under where we need to be. So we've got a deficit there. What's that mean in real numbers? So the remaining inflation funds that we have right now are 9.7. So I mentioned there was a little bit over $24 million in inflationary dollars in the bond. We requested 15.4. So that leaves about 9.7 billion in inflation funds remaining. So we've got some projects remaining, and so based on kind of the current construction pricing and where construction market is now, we are anticipating needing, in addition to that 9.7, we're anticipating needing about $5 million in addition to the 9.7. So that's the job of myself and our department to figure out how we can, you know, maybe have savings on some projects and somehow maybe lessen that $5 million. I think, Ms. Parker, you asked in the last meeting, how much money was left in the inflation? We've got 9.7 left. We see that we're going to need 14.7, so that leaves with a $5 million deficit, and that's kind of what our homework is. So that's kind of really what I wanted to do to summarize. I think I've tried to address maybe all your questions, and certainly would be willing to take any other questions that you may have.
Are there any other questions?
No. No, go ahead.
Ms. Calvert-Hayes, I think you're muted.
Yeah, Marilyn, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Yeah, go ahead, Lina.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm vice chair of the Buildings and Grounds, but yeah, I've never been to a meeting. I don't even know when you do meet. And, you know, I think it would have been good to have been a part of this rather than to just get this tonight. So can you tell me when you do meet and, you know, how we can, I think, the other Buildings and Grounds members also, I don't know if they've attended any meetings or not, I can only speak for myself. But it would help me, rather than to be at the meeting and to hear things, and to at least have been a part of something. So could you tell me, and I think that's what we did last time when we had Buildings and Grounds meeting, and I was chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but can you kind of tell me when you meet and let Dana and Marilyn and I and Andy kind of know exactly when this is going on so that we can be a part also if we choose to be?
Lina, we don't, we aren't meeting. We've just met in our small groups, and that's kind of where we get updated, and then the kind of the workshop we do, or the lead-up to the workshop, the agenda review, that's the only time, you know, there isn't another, like, Buildings and Grounds meeting.
Well, I mean, we didn't know anything about this, at least I didn't, until the last general meeting that we had. You know, I didn't know anything. In fact, you and I talked on the phone, and that was the only reason that I knew anything about bleachers or lights or stormwater or additions. So I just think it would be helpful to our team if we knew a little bit ahead of time rather than at our general board meeting.
May I say, may I speak? We have tried to have the agenda-setting meetings as an opportunity for committee members to learn about agenda items. And with those committee meetings, that gives everybody enough time to ask questions and share information. Unfortunately, I'd requested from the staff to be sure that they had those conversations in the committee-setting agenda meetings. Conversations outside of that is subject to, we have to have a publicized meeting. And so I think moving forward, I think I would like to ask my staff to adhere to that protocol. And that means that when we, Sam, he schedules agenda-setting meetings, and in those agenda-setting meetings, lots of questions arise, and staff have an opportunity, and if we need to invite additional staff, we will have an opportunity to present agenda items that will go on the agenda, and if there's additional information needed to share that, then when we come to the committee meeting, it must be a published meeting. So I think we've kind of learned from this opportunity as we want to be, just realign ourselves. So a lot of this confusion occurred because we were, my staff, we were working outside of that protocol. So I think we will stick to that protocol if that would, I think that would help.
Yeah, thank you. I feel like I really wouldn't have known anything at all, and the next thing I knew we were voting had I not had the conversation with Leah. And, you know, I thank Leah for going over this with me.
Right, right.
Okay. Marilyn, did you have a question or a comment?
Kind of a comment and maybe just a question. The one thing, and I know this probably, it appears on most of the project costs whenever we get those things, the miscellaneous contracts, it's just helpful. I mean, Colin, you just gave a nice little dissertation about what that includes, and I think that that's helpful. And if we could see just the detail of that, I mean, I don't mean every little tiny thing, but, you know, I'm sure that they probably vary with different projects, and so, just so that we have some idea of what the miscellaneous contracts at different projects might have, because we are asked from time to time about certain things. So just, you know, just FYI, if we could just have a little bit of knowledge about that, that'd be great.
Maybe a little more definition of the miscellaneous contracts lineup.
Exactly, yes, so that we understand, because I'm sure, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm sure they probably do vary with projects, and so, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Marilyn, did you get that email from Colin that had a list of all the amendments that have been put on past projects? There's typically, okay, it looked to me like there's typically at least five, if not a dozen, on every project. So you're just saying you'd like to be informed of what all the amendments are that are being put on these projects?
Right, and what the different kind of miscellaneous contracts might be for, you know, various projects that might be different from what the just typical ones are. So it'd just be helpful for us to have that knowledge, just so we understand, go into each project in case we get questions, which we do. So, yeah, thank you.
We can get a better definition for that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other, any other discussion points on this topic?
Yeah, Leah, this is Board Member Jones. I just, I want, just to clarify that what we're looking at tonight, the agenda, the attachment, has changed from what was posted Friday, and I think after some emails that we sent yesterday, things, more information was added and things were changed. I just, I just want to, I am very clear that what we are asked to vote on today is, does not include any lights or bleachers or that sort of thing. I, like Marilyn, would like to understand when alternates are shown to not only board members, but the public, and then when they just don't get shown to us. And so if you go back, and I don't know if Sam, if you can take us back to the work session and what was shown, because that would be helpful, because I just need a clarifying point that some of this information has now been, we had exactly, on this agenda up until today, we had exactly what was on the agenda at the work session. And so I just want to clarify that what has, and I'm going to try to go back, since I don't see a screen going back for everybody to see, I'll try to go back myself. Let's see, board work session, because I think it's important, because these are things that the public sees as well. If we go down to the Wiley Edition at that point, what you're seeing now, and maybe you can pull up what we're seeing, but we've taken out a whole paragraph that says, "As part of the bid packages, Vanoye Construction requested," which I'm sure the contractor didn't request it. Alternate.
They request, they request you to submit your amendments. They request those besides amendments.
I fully understand that. "Cost to perform work located on the construction lay-down area that would enhance a future practice area. If it is the desire of the Building and Grounds Committee to consider these, staff would have discussions with code officials for further clarification, and then Vanoye Construction has requested from the subcontractors that this pricing be held for a period of 180 days from the word of the contract. The total of the alternate pricing is approximately $2.5 million, and that's pretty much the stormwater, the lights, and the bleachers if you add that up." In that, in that particular thing that we were looking at that night, when you look at the one attachment, it showed a summary, and it shows the two, it shows the two alternates that we, that tonight were being asked to vote on, and it shows three alternates that were rejected. But it doesn't show all, it left out those three, but they're written in in the 2.5. Now, today, I didn't realize it, but just a while ago, when I logged in to see, you know, to get my iPad and stuff up, I now see that our landing page and what we're talking about today has that paragraph completely removed. So are we saying we're not going to talk about that as a B&amp;G committee? Is that just completely off the table? I'm just a little confused. And I'm also, don't think it's transparent, and what was shown to us that night, and again, what's still on the summary page, is that you're not showing what we as board members see in some of the other information that finally came to us about, I think, four lights at about $500,000, some bleachers at about $1.6 million, and then some drainage or stormwater at about $88,000. So I think, just moving forward, you know, that to me, I know, I just want to know, are we talking about that? Are we not talking about that? Where does that stand?
I think to me, Board Member Jones, I think to me, what I'm understanding Colin and Daryl to say to us is that they collect, and I sent you all some alternate bids. Alternate bid items are planning documents, in my opinion, and Colin, you correct me if I'm wrong, and they're just things that you want to collect information on in the event you want to make a recommendation. We plan, in fact, if you all are on the committee for opening this fall, we actually have five scenarios that we have secured information on. We're only going to bring two forward because it's feasible to bring two, not five. And so with the planning documents, so the question was, how much are we asking for? And I think Colin has laid that out for us back, and we ask him to be more clear in what he's asking for, and I feel like he's done that. And then the alternate bid items, it's a process, and if you all want to have some sort of discussion in the future about alternate bid items, but that's a planning, that's an administrative planning piece. And really, the only time it should ever come forward is if we're requesting to fund those alternate bid items, or it negatively impacts the bid. If it negatively impacts the bid, or capacity of someone to bid on something, or we're going to bring it forward for funding, then certainly we want to, we want to have it before you for approval. Now, if, and that reason I asked him to simplify the presentation was because I didn't want anyone to assume that he was trying to get the bid items in there that were alternates. I also opened the meeting because I wanted to be very, very clear that at no time did a contractor ask us to place alternate bid items out there for bid. The bid request, the alternate bid request came from Daryl Walker, and he gave me the rationale, it seemed reasonable at that time. I'll have to ask Colin to act, to tell me. It sounded as though you were saying the contractor asked for information. Is that what you were saying, or what were you saying in that paragraph that you? And I think the paragraph was removed because of the questions around the wording of the paragraph, and when I talked to him, I said, you know, if you're saying the contractor asked for something, I don't know why you would say that, or if there's miscommunication, then I want to be clear. I would open, I would open by saying how the request arose. So Colin, I'll let you add any additional remarks about the contractor if you have additional remarks.
Yeah, and I apologize. Kevin, I'm going to ask, am I getting some feedback? It seemed like I tried to pop on a while ago, and I got some, so if I'm doing that.
Yeah, you're fine. You were earlier.
We hear you.
Okay, yes, and to answer your question, Miss Jones, it was, the reason that, it was confusing. It wasn't intended to be confusing, but we realized, I realized in reading the paragraph that it sounded confusing. So the contractor asking for it was a formality. We didn't, in a scenario, the contractor formally asked for the bids from the subs. They're the ones that procure the bids. They publicly open and read. So that was the, that was the reason that it was worded, that they requested that additional pricing. But yes, we removed that so that it was to eliminate that confusion that we, that I was self-inflicted. That was confusion that I put in there.
I was never really confused about that. The part that was eliminated that does confuse me a little bit is, you know, past that one sentence where, so I guess what I'm saying is, if it's something that at some point staff wanted to bring to the board, which is, or it's saying that it's the desire of the Building and Grounds Committee is to consider these. And honestly, until last night, when you sent us something official from staff, you know, I'm a member of the Building and Grounds Committee, the only way that I knew that any of those alternates had ever taken place was having a conversation with a fellow board member. Um, and so, I guess with that being in there, I'm saying, are we gonna have that conversation for now? And it was never displayed in any of the alternates that were, that were rejected. And so I just wanna clarify, you know, you even go on to say they, they're gonna hold these bids for 180 days. Have we now decided at the staff level, this is not something we're gonna entertain, or is that something we're gonna come back and talk about? That was my question.
Yes, sta-, I think in the documents that were, that were sent to you or uploaded assembly, uh, last night, the revised GMP breakdown does reflect those item, those alternates being rejected, and it does specifically say that staff does not recommend that, those three or, or two other, I think three other alternates, we specifically don't recommend accepting those. I, I think that's, I think that should be in your documenting, the assembly documents. I don't know, Sam, if I have access to that now.
It's, it's not on, it's not on the, it's not on the, 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 the summary, the, the one called, uh, GMP summary. It is on one of the other documents that you loaded up, uh, down there. So it's two different, like, one's a summary and one's, I'm, I'm back on the other, I can get to the. I, I just wanna be clear that, so we're saying now, we're taking that off the table, we're not gonna have a discussion at all, in, in, at any time about doing any of those, even stormwater or anything else. I guess we're just, I, I'm, you know, it was on there, not clear, off of the, and I'm just trying to be, and, and, and I realize maybe, so let me just say this, I, I get what we're voting on tonight, and, and we need to move forward with this Wiley project. I'm very disappointed, I think, in the lack of transparency from staff to the entire committee. And I think Dr. Harrison has said, she acknowledges that, but, you know, it's a trust, it's a trust from a board member to staff members with all, especially with all of this stuff that's going on. But it is not okay for us not to show the public all this stuff on the documents, and it's definitely not okay for us to get to a vote, in my opinion, and, um, and us not even know, especially when you put in there, we might talk about the word "these" at a later date. So I'm still a little, little aggravated at the last work session that, you know, I kept asking, is there something else going on and no one chimed in? So it's a little, that's a little disheartening, but we're gonna, we will move on. Um, that's all I gotta say on this matter.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think for, for my part, I was totally confused, because I couldn't tell who was asking for what. At one time, it looked like that the, that the staff was asking, which is the way it normally is, and then it was also a throwback that the contractor was asking. And, I, I mean, I was totally confused on that. I had not known the contractors to come around and ask for the alternates or put any pricing on anything, Colen. So where was the mix-up on all of that? Can you explain that, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, where, on where the request for the alternates came?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the contractor in the C and R scenario, they're the ones that are accepting the bids, they're the compiling the bids, so they're accepting all-
Colen, you know I know all that.
Well, okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's, in a C and R scenario-
Where was, where was the mix-up on who exactly was, uh, in charge of the, of, of the alternates? I mean, that was what was confusing, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't catch on as to who was doing that.
The, the contractors re- re- received the pricing, and then just like in any scenario, whether C and R, or design bid bill, or arbit, or whatever, the owner has the ultimate, uh, decision on which alternates are accepted. I realize, I take ownership in the fact that the way I presented that information was confusing, and thus, and thus, that's why we revised the paragraph in the background summary, uh, and then we added the additional, uh, the additional items, and the one that Ms. Jones was referring to that still doesn't show the rejected alternates, that was the one that was in the, in the work session from two weeks ago. That was not removed, it was left in the package. So I take full ownership in the confusion of not, not, not presenting all the alternates that were rejected. We just focused on the A1 through 5 alternates, and then, and just completely, um, erroneously did not list the AS1 alternates, and didn't think about the fact that, that the appearance was that we were accepting those. At no point have those alternates been considered. Once this project, once the bids came in over budget, we immediately, uh, just decided not to do the alternates that were, that were done as an exploratory pricing exercise, which is basically what the, those alternates were for.
So Colen, this is, I just want one clear, just one more thing, and I, I'll let this go. What, what is the 180 days? Like, so if we, if you weren't expecting that you were gonna get them, then why, why, why put in the paragraph that we were gonna have, we will lock subcontractors in for 180 days? So that's where I'm confusing, I'm just confused about that.
Uh, again, that was, that was not, not really saying the full part, but knowing that we had an issue with timeframe on board meetings, and typically this is a 30 days. It wasn't just those items, it was, it was any other alternate pricing that went along with it, so that the board could have time, knowing what we were going through with, with schedules and COVID-19, and not really knowing what the plan was to get a formal approval. Typically, we would have an approval in 30 days and they would have an answer. So just to allow us some extra time to review the bids, not just those alternate bids, but all the alternates.
So even though, even though in that paragraph, it specifically talks about the 2.25 million dollars, and it just talks about that, that wasn't accurate? That's not what we were talking about?
Well, it was for those, but it was for everything that was related to the bid. It was those specific alternates, but it was all the alternates. That was a relationship to all of, there was no, you know, there's, as I, as I'd said, we, in the, in the information that you represented for this meeting, there's no obligation that we take that bid or not take that bid. We were under no obligation in any time to accept it or not accept it. We just saw it as a due diligence effort on our part to, to have a little extra time in case we needed to continue to have the discussion.
So the part about the 2.25 was just, they just got in there somewhere, because it really wasn't about those three alternates, it was about everything?
The 2.25 was a summary of those, of the three AS alternates.
Yeah, okay.
Well, can you just ask, answer one more question? Um, the project alternates had nothing to do with Wiley. So why did they even come up?
Those, those alternates were selected because, again, we were just exploring the possibility of getting pricing on items that were related to enhancing an athletic area. So these would be, you know, we would have subcontractors that could perform those that were their own side, had mobilized to do work on a project. So, you know, if the project, for whatever reason, we're always kinda trying to be optimistic, if a project comes in $2 billion on the budget, then, you know, that we want, does this, we're just presenting these to say, is this something that you may wanna consider?
But, but we don't even have that project on the board.
Understand, and that's why, again, we didn't lock it to those prices.
Yeah, but it's-
Let me-
The project was proposed-
Let, let me-
Was, if you're, if you're referring to the stadium, that project was proposed in the 2016 bond, it's on the original wish list. So, and Wiley, it would benefit Wiley and obviously Reynolds, and those are both public schools in our school district. So I think the idea was to look at, if this was a project that had been merited enough to make the list for the 2016 bond project, then maybe it's possibly gonna be on a future one, or maybe if there's cost savings, there would be a way to do this project. Um, that's, that's what the look, I mean, ultimately, we wanna offer, you know, equity among our schools, and we want to offer safe places for our students to be able to do extracurriculars, including physical education. And knowing that that laydown area right now is completely unusable, I think the idea too was making that, making that space usable for two of our public schools. They're not private schools, one is a Title I school, um, the other one is a, a, you know, a majority minority school. We're not talking about, you know, trying to give something to schools that already have, you know, adequate facilities or have more than adequate facilities. We're talk, we're looking at it through an equity lens. Um, I did not make the request for those amendments or those additions, just in case somebody thinks I did. I kinda wish I had thought of it. I would love to take credit for it, because I think they need to be done, but I did not do that in this case. This came from staff and-
I just, I just appreciate you actually telling us that-
Me too, Leah.
Thank you.
Well, and then it ended up being a moot point when the project came in over budget. Nobody was, nobody was trying to hide anything.
No, I think, I think it's, I was just confused about that.
Colen sent in, every project has had multiple amendments, but nobody's ever asked about those. I never even knew that we did that.
Well, the only reason-
That we are looking for ways to save money, and that we are looking for ways to economize and, and do, do projects together so that we're economizing and that it's safer for our students. I think that's a great thing that they do, but they don't let us know every line item that they're getting bid on. And I guess now we know that we would like to see that information, so Colen, I appreciate you providing that.
No, and I, I don't need to see all that information, but when we go to the trouble of, of talking about if, if this is something that the B and G committee wants to consider, and we actually put the cost in there, and we put all that in there, that's where I just got a little confused as to, you know, I, I think, um, it, it seems like something, something shifted or changed there, and, 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 and I just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, that folks are really being transparent with the, with the committee and with the board. It just, something just doesn't sit right with me on this, and, uh, but we're, we'll, we'll move on.
Well, I'm sure, because it has to do with Reynolds, and if it, you know, if it was amendments, when we talked about the Dana, if it, it was an amendment on Conawick to, to benefit Final Hill, I don't know that there would have been discussion, but apparently, you know, this seems to be a, a sore spot for some people, um, and it's-
I don't think it has anything-
You know, it's a lightning rod, and that, and that's where, that's what's a shame, because there are two public schools that are in our public school system that we need to make sure are adequately provided for like everybody else's.
And I agree, and you're completely wrong about it just being because of this project. I'm saying if there's any kind of, if staff takes the time to type out a paragraph that talks about something, and then all of a sudden it just goes away, and, and then you, you couldn't find what the amendments were, what, what, when it says the word "these", and you don't know what adds up to 2.5, that's concerning to me. I'm grateful that I had you to tell me what that was, and it's, and I'm, it's not about these two projects, and, and I'm, I'm clear on this, and we're gonna be good, and a minute we'll take a vote, and I'm gonna vote for this, because we need to get this going. But my, my, the point about this is that, you know, I, there's got, there's so much stuff going on, and I just don't feel like that this was, this was transparent with the board. And, and that's where my concern lies, not with you, not with the projects. I appreciate, I mean, I really would have been in the dark if we hadn't had the conversation. But, you know, again, I just, if we move forward, I think, you know, I don't need to see everything we're not considering, for sure, but if you take the time to put it in there, like we're gonna have future discussion about it, and then yet it doesn't show up, something just seems off. So I think we'll, we'll learn.
Yeah, again, when, when the project came in over budget, then there didn't seem to be room or space to have that discussion, because then obviously we don't have the funding for it. So that's why it didn't move forward. But if something changes, and we do have the funding for it, to Colen's point, I think it's great that we have some kinda idea where the price points are on this, on this. Um, and that's, that'll save us time if we need to move forward, so.
Well, I mean-
Are there any other, oh, Lyda, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I don't think it has anything to do with Reynolds or, or whether it was at another school. I have to agree, I, I was totally confused. This is my livelihood, and I just, um, I, I just was totally confused as to how things got like they did. And like I said, Leah, I thank you for having the conversation with me on the phone, because I would have been fat dumb and, and, and happy and, and out of the whole thing, not knowing what was going on. Thank you.
And I've never, I've never seen a list of amendments presented for any of our projects until we got the list today and the email. I guess, I think we've always deferred to our staff to use their expertise to think about what might we need future pricing for, or what, what might enhance a project that we're already doing. So I appreciate that they're thinking ahead on that, and, but I know, in doing this job a year and a half, I've never seen a list of what the amendments were on any bond project that we've done. So this is the first project I have seen it produced for. So I think we're, we're making an extra effort to be transparent, but I'm sorry, it was confusing.
And, and I, I agree with Dana. I mean, you know, I wanna see it happen. You know, I've always been long to see it happen. So, um, you know, I think we just, I think we learned, and, uh, I think we go ahead and move forward, Dana.
Sounds good. Okay, so if somebody could put the agenda back on for me, so I know what's next, that would be great. Thank you.
Yep, color right up.
Okay. Um, and then we also, another one of the 2016 bond projects is a new Brunson Elementary, and we're gonna get a update on that. Is that also, Colen?
Uh, Dr. Harrison, I don't know if you want me to do that, or if you wanna mention anything about that?
Yes, um, so with the next, um, so we have actually, um, we have three, um, cost estimates, one at the Patterson location, one at the current location, and one looking at the Cook location. So what we would like to do, we have a call board meeting on the June 30th, uh, for budgetary reasons and for the fall presentation, reopening presentation. Um, I'd just like to send you all the information in advance and have discussion, uh, just a discussion, not a vote item, on the 30th with the full board, and we just need general direction on what to pursue. Uh, so we will send you that information. Uh, they, we have three, um, cost estimates, they've done a very good job, and, uh, we just like, uh, permission to move forward, to talk to staff, parents about the three options, or if you wanna, want us to look at one option, we can look at one option, but we will send you that information in advance so that you can ask questions. And then when we come on the 30th, um, we'd like an opportunity for a few minutes of discussion and dialogue and get some direction from the board. Okay?
Okay, great. Can you, could you repeat those three locations again?
So it's the, it's the, it's the Thomasville Furniture, the, the location we discussed, uh, the, the home, the current location, just rebuilding it on the current site, and a Cook Elementary location.
Okay, that's what I thought you said that I wanted to repeat.
Right. And so we'll send those, uh, that information. We have a comparison, some huge cost variations, and, um, we'd like to, again, discuss and then start to move forward with speaking with community and staff. Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe we are taking action tonight on, uh, the Wiley addition, uh, considering approval of GMP and project costs for Wiley addition. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, that's Board Member Kaplan.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Board Member Parker.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Dr. Harrison, if you would do the walk-in.
Uh, Leah Crowley.
Approved.
Lyda Coward Hayes.
Approved.
Marilyn Parker.
Approved.
Deanna Kaplan.
Approved.
And Dana Jones.
Approved.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
Okay, if, since there is no further business, this meeting will adjourn.